Okay, I'd like to welcome you to the special call meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners for December 15th, 2020. I'll call the roll. Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Here.
Paragon?
Here.
Beasley Brown?
Here.
Wilkerson is here. Mr. Mazzal, do you have any comments tonight? You're muted.
That, I would like to cover just a couple of things real quick. I need, I'd like to pull item number fourteen.
They can hear him? No?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Like to pull item number fourteen, minutes for 2020, 199. Just need to do a little more work on that. If we can pull that.
Okay.
When you get to it. Second of all, I'd like to recognize Deborah Jenkins, our city auditor. She recently achieved her certified internal auditor certification, passed the exam a couple of Saturdays ago, a pretty lengthy exam, and want to congratulate her. And finally, before we get started, I just want to take a moment to present Commissioner Denning, Commissioner Nash, and Mayor Wilkerson with a gift, kind of a virtual gift in a way right now, in recognition of all their years of service on the Board of Commissioners. I think the three of you together probably total over 50 years of experience that are leaving us, and so I'm going to hold up your gift in front of the camera and hoping it can pick it up, but each one of you all will receive one of these, and I can personally deliver it to you, or we'll have it available down here at City Hall. It's basically a picture of the new part of downtown that probably most have happened during your tenure here with the city. It's a picture of Circus Square, Skypack, Chamber Commerce, the new development that's gone in between Block 6 and 8, and College and State. So we'll be getting this, this picture to you guys, each of the three of you, that you can put wherever you would like, in your homes, or offices, or wherever. But again, we just want to, want to give you that to you. Sorry, it's kind of awkward doing it over online, but in a virtual meeting, but thank you so much for your service, and I'll turn it back over to the mayor.
Thank you, Jeff.
Mayor, can I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. City Manager, I guess the Mercedes that we had talked about are out.
Um, I'm afraid so.
I was drawing my approval there.
Yeah.
All right. First item is approval of minutes from the special call meeting on December 1st, 2020, motion by Wilkerson, and second by Paragon. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? I'll call the roll. Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. Municipal Order 2020-192, municipal order approving the probationary appointments of Jalen Baker, Dustin Blair, Austin Hall, Keenan Johnson, Josh Livingston, Sean Martin, Matthew Napier, and Zachary Tabor to the position of firefighter in the fire department. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Paragon, Mr. Mazzal.
I believe Aaron, the R.A. Director is on here with, and I'd like to give this to Aaron to present, give you an overview of our firefighters that we're recommending for hire here. Aaron?
You, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, I just haven't done this from my office yet, using this camera, so thank you. So this is a really exciting day for us, because as most of you know, we start the recruitment process, it takes more than a year, so this began back in May, we started accepting applications, and we had to be a little bit creative, because obviously that was the onset of the pandemic, so a lot of the face-to-face events that we normally plan on doing, job fairs and whatnot, we weren't able to do, so, and we were able to do a lot of, we partnered with a local company to do some targeted social media, and we still had a really great turnout. We had 243 applications submitted for the position of firefighter, and we have 160 to complete their written test, which is normal ratios for applying and taking the test. We offered the test in different formats this year, so we did hire a company that actually is able to virtually proctor a test, and so we had some of the candidates that did the written test in that virtual setting, and then we offered two different times to do it in person, to try and spread people out, so we still got a great amount of response from testing. We do an initial interview, it's intended to be pretty short, we did that with 77 candidates this year, we had three different groups of people from the Human Resources Department and the Fire Department take, were part of that initial interviews, and then we selected 34 to do for what we call our long interviews, and that is the candidate sitting in front of a panel of about nine people for about 45 minutes to an hour, so we got to meet three, four people, and then from there, we recommended, we selected 15 individuals where we continued on the polygraph exams and the psychological exams, and we decided to hire eight, or to make offers to eight, and that is based on the fact that we are currently too short of our complement, and Chief Jason Coulson has received either verbal or written intentions of retiring from six individuals in the next 12 months, so that's where we came up with the number of eight. So in your memos, you will have the names of all of the individuals, as well as a short description of educational experience and background, a very diverse group of people. So the names are Jalen Baker, Dustin Blair, Austin Hall, Keenan Johnson, Josh Livingston, Sean Martin, Matthew Napier, and Zachary Tabor. So if you, let me know if you have any questions.
Are there any comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. Next is municipal order 2020-193, municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Preston Dunn to the position of Labor Two in the Public Works Department, motion by Wilkerson, and second by Paragon, Mr. Mazzal.
This is to fill the open position of Labor Two, get back to full complement at Public Works operations, and I'll let Aaron give you the details of this hire. Aaron?
So Preston is from the original interview group that we, we appointed someone in the last meeting. We just weren't able to get all of his pre-employment stuff completed in time, so there's a physical and reference checks that are required for the CDL that they need to get, that kind of thing, so we were just a little bit delayed on getting him on the last meeting, so this is the same group, when you see in the memo as far as the 20 applicants and the 13 interviewed, it's the same group as the individual that we appointed at the last meeting, so a little bit of information about Preston Dunn, he's done a lot of work with maintenance operations previously, so we're excited to have him with the group. We do, we are not at full complement, we still have two vacancies, but we are going to wait until the new year, I think, to go out when recruiting is a little bit better, typically in January, so we'll have positions a little bit later on.
Thank you, are there any comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. Next is municipal order 2020-194, municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Rachel Norton to the position of executive assistant in the Police Department, motion by Wilkerson, second by Paragon, Mr. Mazzal.
Most of you all may know J.J. Myers, former executive assistant at the Police Department, left for Florida to move with her family, her husband, back late summer, and so we miss J.J., but we are now at the point we have a candidate before us to replace J.J., and I'll let Aaron give you an overview of that, this process, and who we're recommending for the executive assistant.
Yeah, so this one, as Jeff said, is certainly bittersweet. J.J. was just fantastic, and just such a huge contributor to the Police Department, so, and just for the record, still current executive assistant, she is operating virtually from Florida, thankfully, was really helpful in that transition from Chief Hawkins to Chief Delaney, so grateful that she was able to carry this, and then she's going to be available to also train Rachel, so grateful for J.J.'s contribution, and she will be missed. So we, we received several applications for this position, 85, but they do have to complete the entire law enforcement application, which includes a pre-polygraph questionnaire, and so we received, so 50 of the applicants returned that law enforcement application, and then we selected 29 to be forwarded to the Police Department, and of those 13 went to background checks, that's a pretty lengthy process, as this person's going to be right up there close with all of the chiefs and the admin, we want to make sure they're squeaky clean, and so five were selected for our final interview. Part of that interview was that they had them do a project, they let them know in advance, and they had them present that project, and there was many different parts, different things that they were looking at, so creativity, organization, proper use of budget funds, presentation, and the ability to do that in front of several high-ranking officers of the Police Department, and everybody was incredibly impressed with Rachel. She currently works from WKU, and we are extremely excited for her to join the Police Department.
Thank you, are there any comments or questions? Slim?
Thank you, sir. Aaron, I was going to ask in the last, but I was afraid that I was overlooking it in the memo, but I've gone through this memo as well and don't see it, is there, didn't we used to receive a breakdown, and I realize this is my last meeting, and you can ignore it, and the next commission can decide on these things, but didn't we used to get a breakdown of the gender and race of those that had applied as a group, so that we could try to ensure that our city staff reflects our community, and I don't see that, maybe I'm getting mixed up between some other documents that I get from some of the other boards, but I just don't see that on here.
Slim, that is correct, from the BGMU Board, that's what they do.
Okay, maybe I'm just getting confused then, okay. I think in the interest of transparency, going forward, it'd be good to include that in the memo.
Thank you, any other comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon? Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. Next is municipal order 2020-195, municipal order authorizing the continuation of an agreement with CareHere PLLC for administering employee onsite medical clinic services through calendar year 2022, motion by Wilkerson, and second by Paragon, Mr. Mazzal.
Mayor, if it's okay, I'm going to introduce both of the next two items together, 195 is the renewal of our contract with CareHere for our employee health clinic, Aaron can give you an overview, ask, answer questions on that. The next item, I'll turn that over to Aaron as well, item number 2020-196 is basically another renewal of our third-party administrator for our health insurance services, and that's with MedBEN, so Aaron, if you want to take it from here, and you can go ahead and talk about both items, and then the mayor can call, roll on each individual item.
Sure, so CareHere is the partner company that we use to manage our onsite clinic that we call the City Care Clinic, and believe it or not, we've been with them for five years now. In this year, we were able to expand our hours to four days a week, and so this is just kind of a more of an FYI, if anything, that our Friday doctor, Dr. Rivera, is going to be leaving us, and this Friday is going to be his last Friday, as he commits full-time to his other clinic in Owensboro, and then sometime hopefully in the spring or the fall, once our utilization starts going up, we will, we will look to replace him so that we can continue offering that as a great benefit, but we have nothing but just excellent comments from our employees, everybody loves our doctors, they love the format, we have a really great annual health assessment that the majority of our employees participate in, we've been able to expand the benefits and the offerings of that program, so we're very happy with CareHere. Our initial agreement was for three years, and then for an automatic renewal every two years, so where we are right now is we did our initial three years, we did an automatic renewal for two years, which was 2019 and 2020, and so now we will be entering our sixth and seventh year, and so 2021 and 22 is what, you know, you all are approving tonight for us to continue with them for the next two years.
Any comments or questions?
And then the one on MedBEN is, MedBEN is our TPA, and so we switched with MedBEN a couple of years ago after doing a very thorough search for a new third-party administrator, and they were the ones who helped us successfully add on a reference-based plan in 2020, which has been a very positive addition to our health insurance benefits, and so we would like to continue with them, I'm requesting tonight a one-year renewal with MedBEN.
Thank you, well, are there any questions on MedBEN before we vote on the first item?
Yes, please.
Yes, sir.
Aaron, number five, the MedBEN entity, is that the one that we've bid out to local minister?
No, I think you're, you might be thinking of our consultant, we currently are with Cheryl Morgan, which is a company in Kentucky, but no, this, our third-party administrator, they are headquartered in Ohio, I don't believe that anybody responded to our RFP that was in Kentucky, these typically are either regional or frequently national companies that you would partner with to be your third-party administrator, so at the time, we interviewed, for example, the Blue Cross Blue Shield, we interviewed Meritain, which was the incumbent company, of course, and a few other smaller TPAs, and we decided on MedBEN, which is fairly regional, they do support a lot of organizations, companies, a lot of local government in the region.
One or two of the Houchens group have bid on something the last couple, three years or more, haven't they? I don't know which group, but it would be under the Vann-Meadus subsidiary.
Yeah, they're consultants, they're not a third-party administrator, that I'm aware of, I don't think they offer third-party administrator services, so a third-party administrator actually administers our claims, so they're the ones who take our plan, and when somebody goes to the hospital, the hospital bills them first, they determine what is allowed under the plan, they take away any exclusions from discounts, or they apply our pricing, our reference-based pricing model, so if somebody has a question about a claim or their explanation of benefits, they call MedBEN, so I think you're thinking of our consultants or our brokers, some people call them brokers, and we're currently with Cheryl Morgan, and Cheryl Morgan is the one who helped us write the RFP for a TPA, they advise us, they do a lot of the negotiating on our behalf, so two different responsibilities with these two different groups. And I do know that Houchens offers brokerages services, but I do not know of them offering TPA services.
Okay, that may be the area that I was thinking of, I just would like to see that those agencies that have the capabilities in our area, such as the Houchens group, and as you all are aware, I'm going out the door, so I won't have anything to say after tonight, but I would certainly like to see them included in requests for proposals when they, based on your expertise, fit in if they can. We have had in years past complaints about that, and I think Jeff has taken care of that problem, and if they're capable, then, and they're local, then I am sure that we will do everything to include in our bidding process or request for proposals. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe, are there any other comments or questions before I call the roll for the first item, which is the CareHere renewal? I'll call the roll. Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. Next is municipal order 2020-196, municipal order authorizing the continuation of an agreement with MedBEN relating to employee health and third-party administrator services for calendar year 2021, motion by Wilkerson, and second by Paragon. Are there any further questions, since we've had that discussion on MedBEN or that explanation? I'll call the roll. Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
And Wilkerson is yes. Next is municipal order 2020-197, municipal order accepting the Intermodal Transportation Authority Incorporated financial statements ending June 30, 2020, motion by Wilkerson, and second by Paragon, Mr. Mazzal.
As we do each year, keep a close eye on the ITA, I'm just kidding, Meredith, it's required that we get a report. It's required under our bond ordinance that we get a financial report from the ITA, and this is for the year into June 30, 2020, and we've got Meredith Rozansky, a lady that wears many hats at the Chamber with us tonight, to give you an overview and answer any questions you have on the ITA, 630, 2020 financial statements. Meredith?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor, and Commissioner, and I will be brief tonight, and I understand that you have a copy of the audit in front of you, so I'm just going to draw your attention to a few pages, if you'll turn to page two, I'm in the middle of the page, you'll see the most important part, it's the opinion paragraph, and it says, based on our auditors, which is Carl Riggs and Ingram, it's in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the authority, so that is a clean, unqualified opinion on our financial statements. Over on page four, that is the management discussion and analysis, each year I write that, and so this is not an official part of the part that the auditors audit, but it's for those that are looking for more of a management commentary on how the year went, and this will give you a brief summary of that, again, it begins on page four, and then if you'll turn your, over to page nine, this begins the asset side of the balance sheet, and I'm just going to go through some significant fluctuations, so you understand from year to year sort of where we are, and the first thing you'll notice is that there was a significant decrease in cash, in cash equivalents, as well as investments, so in two, during the fiscal year ended 630, 2020, we did purchase 294 acres from the Wilson family to be able to expand the trans park, and so that was a huge coup for the future of the trans park, and so that's what you see that decrease for, if you look at wage assessment receivable, and that was a decrease due to COVID-19, obviously during COVID, we had some shutdowns of the businesses within the park, thankfully, we are back up fully operational, and they are all working, but we did see that decrease in the latter part of the fiscal year, and you'll see construction in progress, the increase there is due to the work that's being done on Prosperity Drive during the year, so there's a new road that was being built within the park, the increase in land held for development reflects the addition of the Wilson property, and then if you turn over onto page 10, you'll see the liability side of the balance sheet, the increase in payables there was due to a progress bill and the retainage amount on the Prosperity Drive road construction, and then also the increase in unearned revenue is due to activity of the sales in the park, and so we had a sale to Cannon Automotive of a couple acres, and then we also had the land donation to Crown Corp. Concealed, and so that reflects the percentage complete of the park, and then the last thing on the balance sheet is the decrease in unearned lease revenue, and that reflects the principal and interest payments that the city and the county made during the year on the bonds related to the trans park, and then also the additional proceeds from the Cannon sale that were applied to the bonds. If you will turn on over to page 11, you'll see the statement of revenues, expenses, and change in net position, just a few items to note here, and one, you'll see land sales, it reflects the approximately two acres that we sold to Cannon Automotive, and that, those proceeds were remitted to the city, and that was used to pay down on the bonds, and wage assessment, obviously down due to the temporary shutdowns we discussed already, and grant income was up, if you'll recall, several years ago, the state passed legislation that the TBA funding that was going to the state on behalf of TBA counties would be remitted back for economic development purposes, and so those were grant funds through TBA. Lease income is the principal, and the proceeds payments made on the bonds by the city and the county, lease expense is obviously the same thing, and then cost of land sales, that is the cost to the ITA of the Cannon Automotive sale, but then also the donation for Crown Corp. Concealed, and just a reminder that Crown Corp. Concealed, that was what we announced in February, it was $150 million investment and 125 jobs, and if you haven't been out to the trans park, I encourage you to go out there, it's pretty incredible, it's coming out of the ground, and then the last item I will draw your attention to is if you turn all the way over to page 28, all the notes are just sort of standard procedure, but this year, due to crazy activity- But this year, due to crazy activity, we've had a lot of subsequent events. And so I kind of wanted to walk you through what each of those related to. Note one relates to the sale of property to B and R Electric. And so those funds have been remitted to the city as well and have been used to pay down the bonds further. And note two, under subsequent events, regards the expansion of Prosperity Way to serve Crown Corp. Concealed. And so that $1.67 million investment will be building an additional road and installing additional utilities, which will open up that new property we purchased and then also serve the Crown project. The third note that has the real estate purchase option on the five acres, that's the Nova Steel expansion property. And we'll talk about that later in the agenda tonight. And then also note four is regarding the bond issue that you guys will have the second reading of tonight. So a lot of positive activity going on and we expect it to continue right into 2021. Oddly enough, in a COVID year, we're having a record economic year. So it's a good year for us. But I'm happy to take any specific questions you have.
Meredith?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Joe.
Oh, okay. Meredith, what properties that you have listed here on one of your documents, are you leasing? And tell me what it is.
So there are a few houses. So when the ITA was originally formed, some of the property owners at the time said that they would sell their land condition on them buying the house as well. So we have a few houses that are being leased in the interim before they're sold as part of property packages. And we also have the old ITA office in the trans park, which is currently being leased to Goodwill Industries as their headquarters.
Okay.
Meredith? Mayor?
Did you refinish, Joe?
Yes, I'm finished.
I'm sorry, thank you. Sue?
Yeah, thank you. You sure you're done, Joe? Sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Awkward. First of all, I want to say I serve on the board of directors for this board and so does Jeff. And so we get to meet regularly and watch Meredith go. And it's super impressive and that is a very healthy organization that is just growing. I was hoping that you could just sort of summarize the three projects that are out for the folks that are listening that are currently being undertaken out there in the trans park. And then what you think next year is going to look like for us.
Okay, well, currently going up, as we discussed, you've got Crown Corp. Concealed. So that's going up at the top of the hill where the water tower is will be, what, 300,000 square? Yeah, 300,000 square foot facility, 150 jobs. You've also got the new Dollar General cooled storage facility being built right off of Technology Way. So over by Greck. And that's a $26 million project. And then also Nova Steel. And Nova Steel is a multi-phase project. It's a total of
70 jobs.
70 jobs, $110 million. Sorry, I'm using Christian as my phone friend because there's too many projects to keep up with.
That's a good problem.
And fingers crossed, we're supposed to hear this week on a really big one. So keep us in your thoughts and prayers because this one would be awesome.
Thank you so much. It's interesting how we're doing so well in this ugly time.
Well, it's interesting in the fact that, you know, with several of the projects like Crown Corp. Concealed, for instance, they make aluminum packaging for food products. And because of COVID, with everybody staying home, getting takeout, eating more canned goods off the shelves, they can't build facilities fast enough. And so we're seeing a lot of activity in sort of that aluminum sector because everybody's, you know, at home drinking soda all day long.
And those are really high-paying jobs, from what I understand.
Those are very high-paying jobs. Yes, sir, Joe.
Meredith, I may have missed it before. How many total acres do we have available right now?
Well, we know we've got about 400. Yeah, we've got about 400 acres right now.
Okay.
That aren't under option or currently have an agreement tied to them. So there is an agreement that we're working to close before the end of the year with a private developer that's going to build 125,000 square foot speculative buildings. And we have more product markets. Because right now, we, Nova Steel did buy our existing speculative building. That will be going up the first part of 2021. And then Constellium does have an option on the 40 acres behind them. So of property that we could outright, you know, sort of sell tomorrow, there's about 400 acres. With the addition of the 294 that we just bought. So we were really close to running out.
Thank you. Are there any more questions or comments? I'll call the roll. Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. Thank you, Meredith. Next is municipal order approving and authorizing conveyance of property by Intermodal Transportation Authority, Incorporated to benefit Nova Steel USA Incorporated, approving and authorizing the execution of the partial cancellation of lease and ground lease and approving and authorizing the execution of payment move taxes agreement among the city of Bowling Green, Warren County, Warren County Board of Education, Nova Steel USA Incorporated. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Perigin.
So we're doing a couple of different things here. This is a multi-parter. First thing, though, is we're giving the okay to convey property to Nova Steel, the one Meredith just mentioned, under the restrictions we have in place that anytime the ITA wants to give away property or sell it for under 25,000 an acre, the city has to give them the okay to do that. Then part of that, the second part is the release of the partial or release of a lease and ground lease that has to do with the bond issue that we did in 2007, the GO lease that releases that free and clear to Nova Steel. And then the last part of this is the payment in lieu of tax agreement that Nova Steel has agreed to do, given that they're doing an industrial bond issue. And I'll let Meredith or Hillary give you the details of that pilot agreement that's in your packets behind the municipal order. Meredith, you want to take that?
On the acreage, it's about five acres of property that is directly behind the current speculative building. And they will need that property in order to expand that facility. So they're committed to go into 200,000. They want the ability to grow to 300,000 square feet. Going back to Joe's question earlier on leased property, there are three houses on that property that will ultimately get demolished. So that lease revenue won't be something, but that was the point of taking the property to begin with. As with all of these projects, we always negotiate a pilot agreement. So a payment in lieu of taxes with Nova Steel. Hold on just a second. Trying to pull up that pilot real quick.
I have it, Meredith, if you want me to. It's 100% on the first five years of abatement and then 75 for the next five and then 60% of abatement for the last 10 years.
Correct. So, and that would be on the entire property, not just the five acres. So again, this is a $110 million project. So this is in line with the typical incentives that we offer for a project this size.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? I did want to correct one phrase that you mentioned. Meredith, you said when you took the houses, we don't take, we purchase. We haven't used in a domain and taking any of those properties. So just want to make sure that people understood that.
Yes, so the properties were purchased originally by the ITA. When they purchased the acreage that they owned adjacent to the park.
Any other comments? I'll call the roll. Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. Next is second reading of ordinance BG 2020-39, ordinance relating to classification pay schedule. Ordinance amending the classification pay schedule G for general classified employees of the city of Bowling Green for fiscal year 21. This is the second reading of the adjustments that the fire department did to retirement. Are there any comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. That was the second reading and so it makes it binding. The next is second reading of ordinance BG 2020-40, ordinance amending agreement related to the city-county planning commission. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute amended and restated agreement for the establishment of the joint city-county planning commission of Warren County and the joint city-county board of adjustments. This is the second reading we discussed last time. Are there any additional questions or comments? Slim?
Yeah, I voted no last time and I plan on voting no again. I would encourage my colleagues on the commission to also vote no on this particular item. As Bowling Green continues to grow, as Warren County continues to grow, the idea that we have less decision makers at the table making decisions for how that growth occurs is antithetical to the idea of including the people that we're growing into. And so this is, this is an unfortunate thing. I mean, this is either a power play or it's about money. And if it's about money, then let's just be honest that, you know, I've read several things today, going all the way back a couple of years ago when Mayor Wilkerson and I first talked about this. The very first thing that we discussed is the amount of money that the county puts in and the amount of money that the city puts in compared to the amount of money that the smaller cities put in. But it's been that way for a long time. I'm not a guy who believes in continuing to do things just because that's the way that we've always done it. But I can't hear a compelling argument for why we're changing this now. A little research of planning and zoning issues around the Commonwealth, this is almost unprecedented where we're breaking apart from one another to make ourselves smaller to be able to make decisions about larger swaths of property. I think it's unfortunate. I think it's a poor direction to go when we, you know, if we're looking towards one day being metro, if we're looking just to be bigger. I think the idea that we are saying to people that we want less people inputting into the decision, which then makes it even harder to reflect the community. But when you make your decision makers a smaller number of people, it gets harder and harder to be reflective of the diverse community that we have. I just think it's the wrong direction for Bowling Green. We have had unprecedented growth during a coronavirus. We just heard that from Meredith on a couple of issues ago, a couple of items ago. But now what we're doing is talking about changing the process with which we've had all this wonderful growth. And I really just think that it's unfortunate that what we're doing is we're attempting to keep people from being involved. And people are going to disagree with me and that's fine. I got nothing to do anymore. I'll sit here all night and we can talk about it. But the idea that we're leaving people behind in the decision-making process, putting that power into a small number of hands so that we can move forward. Maybe this is workable in some way, but I don't see it as good business for Bowling Green. And it's not good stewardship in my opinion either. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
No.
Perigin?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. It was the second and final rating. Next is the second reading of ordinance BG 2020-41, ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing 1.3686 acres from RM2 to family residential and GB general business to planned unit development located at 01024, 1028, 1032, 1038 Kenton Street and 1023, 1027, 1031 and 1033 Greenwood Alley, presently owned by CSRBG Investments LLC, care of Chris Robertson, with Bellevue Properties LLC, care of Desmond Bell as the applicant. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Perigin. This is the second reading of the unanimous recommendation for planning and zoning. We discussed last time. Are there any further comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Denning?
Explain.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. That's the second binding vote. Next is ordinance BG 2020-43 for second reading. Ashley, would you get that one for me, please?
Let me what?
Do you want me to do number 11?
I'm sorry.
Well.
For number 11.
I skipped 11, I'm sorry. Thank you. This is the second reading ordinance BG 2020-42, ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing 296.41 acres from agriculture to heavy industrial located at 0 Fred Madison Road and 1188 Mispa Road, presently owned by Intermodal Transportation Authority, Incorporated, care of Ron Bunch. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Perigin. Again, we discussed that last time on the unanimous recommendation from planning and zoning for the ITA. Are there any other questions or comments? I'll call the roll. Denning?
Yes.
Nash? Nash, I didn't get you in, sorry.
Looks like he might be frozen.
Okay, just dropped off the screen. Okay, I'll continue, Perigin?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. Give just a minute, give Slim a chance to drop back in.
Now, had this been me and I'd been at home, I know where this laptop would be. Be over in Bruce's yard, backyard.
Okay, I don't see him. We'll continue on. Motion passes. Unfortunately, Slim wasn't able to retain on the line for that one.
Do we need to wait a little longer?
It was a second reading and he voted last time, so I think he'll be okay. But the next is the long one. So we'll go ahead and start ordinance BG 2020-43, the second reading. And Ashley, if you'll get that one for me.
Ordinance providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds. An ordinance of the city of Bowling Green, Kentucky, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds, Series 2021A taxable general obligation bond, Series 2021B, in aggregate and maximum principal amounts of $40 million and $6,500,000, respectively, for the purpose of the financing of costs of the acquisition of a leasehold estate in the real properties and improvements constituting the trans park expansion project and authorizing a second supplemental contract lease and option with the Intermodal Transportation Authority, Incorporated in accounting of Warren, Kentucky, with respect to the trans park expansion project. Approving forms of bonds, authorizing designated officer to execute and deliver the bonds, authorizing and directing the filing.
Five, drop, on the way to five.
The filing of notice with the state local debt officer providing for the payment and security of the bonds, creating bond payment funds, authorizing acceptance of the bids of the bond purchasers for the purchase of bonds following the advertised sale of the bonds and repealing inconsistent ordinances.
Will you mind reading that again for me? I didn't get something there.
Motion by Wilkerson, second by Perigin. This is the second reading, but we've had a request, Jeff, that you'll need to explain. And Slim popped back up on the screen briefly. And Slim popped back up on the screen briefly, but is now, it was frozen and then gone again. So hopefully he'll get back on shortly. But go ahead, Jeff.
You want me to go ahead?
Yes, sir, please.
Since the first reading of this back on December, December first, we got a request from the county to discuss the terms of this. And they, they really felt like they needed to extend the term of the, the bonds for, in order to, to lower the debt service requirements during those years. They were splitting it fifty fifty with us. So Katie and I met with, with them and the proposal was for, to go thirty years. And Katie and I kind of countered with five, with just twenty five years extending it from twenty to twenty five. So we are, we bringing that back to you as an amendment to the first reading. And basically Katie or Ashley or whoever can correct me if I'm wrong, but the only change I believe is on page four of the, of the bond ordinance, where we go from a maturity date of no later than September first of twenty forty one to changing that to September first of twenty forty six. And I believe that is the only change in, in all of the documents, just extending that maturity date. Katie can jump in here too, but we felt, felt comfortable with this, given the fact that our revenue streams are still going to be staggered as projects come into play at the Trans Park. The ITA wage tax will, will start at different times and end at different times. We are working on some additional revenue pledges that we can't really discuss tonight, but we are hopeful. For one, we, we want to thank Warren County Water District. They have agreed to pledge revenues from their, their metered revenues that are derived from the, the new area of the Trans Park to help with this debt service. So we, we thank them for that. And other than that, like I said, the only change is the maturity date on this. And we're requesting an amended first reading and we'll follow up with a second reading and a special call later this week. Katie, did I miss anything?
No, that covered it all.
So that one change extending the amortization makes it a substantial substantive change that we need to do a second reading?
Unfortunately, it does. Yes.
Slim, I know that you just joined us. The, the request is to amend this ordinance to extend the amortization from twenty to twenty five years, which will lower the payments, but extend the length of time that they're paid.
Is there a dollar figure on that at the end? A difference in dollar figure?
I think it's about three hundred and forty thousand less per annum, isn't it?
Yes, that's correct. Well, that's with about two point five million more, two point three, I'm sorry, million more for the additional five years on total debt. However, it does reduce our annual cost by about three hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Okay, with, with the request for the amendment to change that, make that one change that Mr. Mazzle brought up, the motion will be made by Wilkerson, second by Paragon. So if there's no other questions, we'll call the roll based on the, the one vote to extend the amortization and then we'll come back and vote on the amended bond. So this is for the extended amortization. Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
And Wilkerson is yes. So now we're going back and reading, a first reading of the amended general obligation bond with the amortization table extended. And any questions about that? I'll call the roll. Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. So we'll have a second reading at the next time. Have a second reading of ordinance BG twenty twenty forty four. Ordinance approving amendment to amended and restated interlocal cooperation agreement related to the Intermodal Commerce and Distribution Center and Industrial Park Kentucky Trans Park. Ordinance authorizing the execution of an amended and restated interlocal cooperative cooperation agreement among the city of Bowling Green, Warren County, the Intermodal Transportation Authority Incorporated and the Southern Kentucky Regional Development Authority related to the development, promotion, acquisition, design, construction, operation, management and/or financing of an expansion to the Kentucky Trans Park. Motion by Wilkerson and second by Paragon. Again, this is the second reading from an item that was explained last time. Are there any further questions? I think Meredith is still here if you have any comments or questions. I'll call the roll. Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
And Wilkerson is yes. Fourteen has been pulled, so we'll do municipal order twenty twenty two hundred. Municipal order approving the year seventeen annual action plan amendment for community development block grant coronavirus funding and authorizing its submission to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Paragon, Mr. Mazzle.
This is in regard to an additional round of CDBG coronavirus funding. I'm going to turn this over to Brent Childers. Give you an overview and answer any questions you may have. Brent?
Oh, not him.
You too, Joe. So we got word that we received an additional round of three hundred and thirty one thousand dollars. An additional CDBGCV, that's three thirty one, six fifty seven. We have a public hearing requires an amendment to the action plan. What we're proposing is to continue with what we have already currently existing out there in relationships and providing rent utility assistance. We still feel like that's the biggest need. So what we'll be doing is passing this through to our partners. As they extinguish the first round of funding, now we can transition into this next round of funding to keep support going out there into the community, keep the resources flowing out for the citizens of Bowling Green. With that, I'll entertain any questions.
Joe? Yeah, Brent. Were any individuals evicted because they weren't able to pay at that time? Or during that time?
I can't answer that, Joe. There've been several different things put out there about moratoriums and the CDC has issued things, the governor's issued things. Evictions are handled through the court system, so I can't say whether or not that no one was evicted during that time. I know that those moratoriums did impact the overall housing market, but it also with the job loss and economic loss due to the COVID nineteen pandemic created a great demand for rental assistance in our community. So what we're trying to do is provide the resource to prevent that. I can't say that how many people were evicted or no one was evicted or I just don't have that information, Joe.
Okay, Bill.
Anything else, Joe?
Oh, no, sir. I'm sorry.
Any other comments or questions?
I think Dana has her hand raised, Mayor.
Dana?
Thank you, Mayor. So if a community member is in need of rental or utility assistance, where can they find information on how to apply, whether in person or online? And then second, does this also include mortgage assistance?
Yes, it does. Sorry, mortgage assistance as well as rental assistance. We kind of group them all together as, as a housing assistance to some degree. But yes, it would be rental, mortgage and utility. So housing assistance and utility assistance. Our partnerships are through, one through the Bowling Green Warren County Welfare Center, which is in the basement of the courthouse. That's one of our partnerships, providing rental and utility assistance. And that phone number is.
Two one one.
Two one one is a great place to start. No, eight four three, but my mind is blank on the last four. Slim, do you remember it offhand?
Where at? Housing, or at? I do not.
I don't either. Eight four three, that's all I got in my eight four.
Five two one zero, but I'm guessing. Five two one zero, maybe.
Three four zero.
Five three four zero.
Five two three.
Yeah, Nick pulled out Google real quick, so thank you, Nick.
All right.
And then also we have a partnership, a group of nonprofits with Hotel Inc., Habitat, Hope House, Brass and Refuge BG. And anybody can contact any of those organizations. They kind of have a little bit of a focus amongst those organizations. But email back and contact them, they'll get them in contact with the right organization within that group. So any of those organizations, so those are the two ways of providing assistance. Also for people, information, Community Action has life funding to assist with utility assistance. So there's another resource out there in the community for those that are needing some assistance.
Thank you. And is this like posted on our website somewhere where we can direct folks to, to know where to reach out for this relief?
It will be very soon.
That's all. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. Next is municipal order twenty 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 two oh one. Municipal order authorizing amendment to subrecipient agreement between the Bowling Green, city of Bowling Green and Bowling Green Warren County Welfare Center for additional community development block grant coronavirus funding. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Paragon, Mr. Mazzle.
So I know, I know this is sounding redundant, but the last municipal order we just talked about was to amend year seventeen action plan. This is actually to get the money to the subrecipient. In this case, the welfare center. We're going to give a hundred thousand dollars of the three thirty one to the welfare, welfare center to get out to the people in need for the rent and utility assistance. And again, Brent here can, can add to that or answer any questions on that. But this is just the subrecipient handoff to the welfare center.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. Next is municipal order twenty twenty two oh two. Municipal order authorizing the filling of a second coronavirus relief fund application for reimbursement of incurred expenses in the coronavirus relief funds with the Department for Local Government and authorizing and directing the mayor to execute any documents which are deemed necessary by the Department of Local Government to reimburse the city of Bowling Green and further authorizing the mayor to act as the authorized correspondent for reimbursement. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Paragon, Mr. Mazzle.
So about, I think it's gone on almost two weeks now. Two weeks ago, we found out that there was going to be another round of the, the state money that came down through the CARES Act, the first CARES Act money, the one point seven billion that the state got. The first round, they distributed around three hundred million dollars. The cities split that up based on population. We found out that there was another fifty million that we're going to distribute based on population and that the city was eligible to get a million five eighty eight, two thirty four. So I hope you all didn't mind, but we, we have started going to work on trying to get that money and are coming to you tonight to get your permission to formally submit an application. All we need to do is show proof that we have defended a million five eighty eight in public safety. And we're going to go about the same process we did back in the summer to draw down the, the four million nine that we received. This time we're getting the one million five eighty eight, two thirty four. So Nick is working on this along with finance and Brent. Nick can answer any questions you might have on any of this.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. Next is municipal order twenty twenty two oh three. Municipal order authorizing payments to Bowling Green Municipal Utilities for Assistance with past due balances in the amount of ten hundred and eighty five thousand dollars in CARES Act funding for community relief. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Paragon, Mr. Mazzle.
So I know this is confusing. There is a lot of CARES Act money going back and forth here, but this is pertaining to the regular CARES Act money that the city received. We had planned to give out additional assistance for utility and, and housing. And what we're, we're proposing to do tonight to get this money out faster is to give BGMU a two hundred eighty five thousand dollars and apply that to roughly fourteen hundred accounts to kind of help them get caught back up. Brent has worked on this and again, this is two hundred eighty five thousand of the initial CARES Act money that the city received that we're going to give back to the community by way of BGMU to directly help with utility bills and get people caught up as, as much as possible. So Brent's here again with us and can answer any questions on this proposal here. But he did the math and we feel like this is the most effective and efficient way of getting the money out faster and helping people with utility assistance. And I'll let Brent answer your questions.
Slim, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. Brent, will, will there be some due diligence to ensure that these past due charges are in fact related to coronavirus? Now, go ahead.
What makes this one a little bit unique is that what we're proposing tonight isn't really a, there's no application to it. This is really a direct payment credit to individual accounts. So the way and what we saw over the last several months is we've had these resources, but there's been an administrative delay, what I call it, of getting those funds out into the community. Because you got to take applications, you got to go through, verify everything. And so we haven't had the speed that we'd like to have. So what we're looking at with this is really what's, what's a more efficient delivery of services to, to benefit the community. And so we came up with this concept of this direct payment, one check to BGMU would then be applied to individual account holders. So in working with BGMU staff, what I was able to do is identify all of the accounts, residential accounts, so these are not commercial accounts, residential accounts that had a, were carrying a past due balance. And looked at that list and it just contained very, very basic information, really looking at the amount past due, their current bill amount and some addresses, service address and mailing address. And that's really all I have to go on. There's no information other than that. And so looking at that and doing kind of an analytical approach to this giant spreadsheet, that's how we were able to narrow it down to about fourteen hundred accounts. So not saying that all of these are exactly COVID related, but at this point, nine months into this, I think tomorrow's our nine month anniversary whenever we shut down the city offices. We feel like everybody's been negatively, everybody's been impacted by COVID in some way or another. And this isn't meant to be a replacement of everything else that we have going on in the community that I've already talked about. This is really meant to supplement some of the things that are going on and to expedite the investment of utility assistance. One of the things in talking with BGMU, they've seen, you know, the curve of BGMU's past due balances really went like this very quickly. And I've saw on those where there were some account holders that were approximately nine months behind. So we're not trying to bring all those up. We're trying to make an impact in the community and reduce that dead burden that is carried by the community and focusing on those that have those needs. So I can't speculate to say that all these are exactly COVID related or what the specifics of the COVID related are. But I would say that at this point, nine months into this pandemic, we've all been impacted by COVID and this is a way for us to try to expedite that as much as possible.
And I appreciate that very much. Who is then making the decision as to where the money is applied to what accounts? So, you know, Joe and Susie live next door to each other. Who decides if Joe or Susie gets it?
So we're not looking at Joe and Susie. There is no Joe and Susie in the situation. It is merely an analytical spreadsheet evaluation of certain criteria. So the first evaluation that I used is looking at service address to mailing address and did those two match up in the spreadsheet? Trying to distinguish who is responsible for their own utilities versus maybe somebody where a landlord is responsible for the utilities. And so the bill is sent to another address, excluded those. And then I started looking at what is the number of months someone's behind based on looking at the current bill amount. uh, divided by their total, uh, balance owed, uh, and then pulled any of those that were, uh, less than two months. It felt like that was, those, those weren't that far. They weren't as impacted. Uh, and then, uh, looked at what is the average bill, uh, and did another filtering off of that. And then came, that's how I got down to about the 1,400 accounts. And then that's what I'm proposing is a $200 credit to each of those accounts. So there is no Joe and Bill. There is no Stacy. There is no Susie. There is none of that. It is merely a spreadsheet, uh, analytical. And this is really a, a, a different way of approaching the same thing. Uh, because in, in other instances, what we do is, uh, we take all these applications, we do everything and then we make the payment. What we're saying is here's the payment applied to these accounts that meet these metrics, uh, based on what we did. And so I appreciate BG MU's customer service staff and working with me because I promise you, the first time I proposed this to them, uh, they had a reaction of, I think you're crazy, uh, which is what I would normally get from you all. Uh, so I'm kind of used to that. Uh, but, uh, so that's why I wanted to just try to say this is a unique and a different approach. Uh, but this is probably 10 to 15 times faster than if we did do an application based process, uh, out to the community.
Thank you.
But old Joe and Susie though could need help and not get it. Am I understanding it right?
You are correct. And if Joe and Susie need help, we have other partners in the, in the, in the community that are available uh, and have resources to help them such as the welfare center, such as community action, such as Together BG. There are other resources in the community available for Joe and Susie. The, my point is on this exercise, I'm not looking at Joe and Susie and what is Joe and Susie's status. I'm looking at a spreadsheet with nothing but numerical information and making, uh, what I believe is the best choice and the best decision for the community.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nope, go Joe, go.
Uh, Joe and Susie though could live in the house owned by John Doe and John Doe gets the money. And Joe and Susie don't know anything about John Doe getting the money until the man's over there with, with a long white lies cutting the water, well, the water's already off.
So, and that's why I looked at the service address versus the mailing address. Uh, so because if Joe and Susie are paying the rent to John and, and that rent is the utilities, then John's responsible for it. So then those two addresses wouldn't match up. So I could do a comparative of what are those two addresses and do they match or not to give an output to then sort by. And so that's why, um, that was the first thing that I looked at, uh, was the ma, the mailing address versus the service address.
Well, Slim, Joe and Susie, hell, they gone.
Well, there are other resources. I, I, I do, it, it is a different approach i- in my opinion, having worked 22 years in social services. It's, it's somewhat of a different approach, but I like the idea that we're trying to get the money out as quickly as we can, offer as much relief as we can. And it's not as if we just did it on a blind draw and just said, here's some money, apply it to 144 accounts and let's move on. There was some wind down. I wasn't trying to imply that Joe and Susie would be left out. They didn't have the resources. I was just looking for some direction on how the 144, what were selected. I think I'm using, 1,400, I'm sorry, 1,400 were selected so that, and then I guess they'll just get it on their bill that they got a $200 credit?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep. And that doesn't mean, yeah, Merry Christmas. It doesn't mean that they will not have a balance due either.
Right, right.
They, they very well could have a balance due. They will just be $200 less. And BG MU is, has agreed that they would apply that if I sent them the list based on that filtering, that they would apply that $200 across. And so the municipal order is up to 285, uh, because want to make sure all the numbers work out. So we give ourselves a little flexibility whenever I finalize that.
In a perfect world, I don't know that, that, that in my opinion, this would be the greatest plan. But in the COVID world we're living in, I think you, you've done a really nice job, Brent.
Thank you, Slim. I appreciate that.
Jeff, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I just want to make it, uh, clear that with this 285 and the former money that we, the CDBG money, coronavirus CARES Act money allocated to welfare center and the Together BG, this 285 takes us just a little bit over a million dollars in utility and rent assistance, rent assistance that we're getting out the door and trying to get in to people that need it in, in an efficient and expedient manner. And that's one reason that we were seeing, like Brent said, we were seeing this thing drag out and drag out and people are needing help and this is the most expedient way to do it. And so this will get us right around just a little bit over a million dollars of assistance. Hopefully in the next, within the next month or so to people out there that are, that are struggling. And I want to make one more reminder, uh, anybody out there, we've still got this small business cares, uh, money that we need to get out to that, that's, it's, it's not going out as fast as we would like. So just another commercial here that if you're a small business or you guys, if you know small business people, uh, there's the 2,500 option and the 5,000 option. We're still writing checks for those too, and we need applications to get that out the door. So just a reminder.
We can't fund those applications unless they submit an application on the front end. Uh, so please share the word out there. Uh, we would appreciate that as we continue. So the city is administering that one.
One, one final question, if I may?
Mm-hmm.
Did you say Slim? Okay, uh. Do we have a guarantee from BG MU that if, if $200 is applied to an account that they will not then cancel that account because they're still overdue for a period of time? Or is it possible that $200 could go in and they could turn them off in 10 days anyway?
So under the, the current order, um, the, the, the whole shut off thing, if there's a payment plan in place, then they will not shut off. Uh, so I, I, I can't, I can't compare what I have to what they already have in the payment plan. It's, it's everything right now, just like everything else in the world in COVID, it seems as, uh, just kind of trying to, everybody's trying to figure it all out. Uh, so I can't compare what, what we have versus what they have over here on the payment side. Uh, either way, that is a debt owed by the community, uh, to the utility company, uh, in some capacity. Um, so we're trying to assist with that, uh, debt relief to utility debt relief, uh, on behalf of the citizens of all of them.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Dana?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to thank you Brent for thinking outside the box and thinking through how to get this into the hands of families who need it. As a family resource coordinator, this is a lot of what I do every day and I'm seeing that same bell curve, um, just so many families. Um, as the months pile up and the cutoff notices arriving, um, that's a lot of stress and on families. So I'm really grateful that you are finding ways to get this to families as quickly as possible. Um, because what I, I'm seeing as I'm, uh, as in November, late November, there were already appointments as late as, uh, middle of February before a family could be seen to try to access other utility assistance. So when you're, uh, right after Thanksgiving, looking at not even getting an appointment until middle of February, that, uh, knowing that some folks are going to be able to get that relief now right before the holidays, um, is really good news. I think a lot of families who are really stressed out about the impact of COVID and, um, everyone being unemployed and not knowing what happening. So just grateful for you for finding ways to try to reduce that wait time and so many people, um, are worried about their future.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. So how will someone know if they got this credit?
There, there will just be a credit applied to their account. So on their statement or whatever, they will show, uh, it will show an additional payment, um, made of $200. Um, so there's no notices out to the community. Uh, this is really just going to be a kind of a backdoor, uh, payment through BG MU.
And do you know the timeline in terms of when you expect it to hit the accounts?
Yeah. So, uh, after approval tonight, uh, it'll be, my plan is to request it in the next check run from finance. So we can go ahead and get the payment. Uh, I can finalize the list. Uh, so I don't, I think we missed this week. So maybe what Katie will let me stink it in if there's one next week, uh, so we can get that out and then BG MU start crediting those, uh, accounts.
Thank you so much.
Mm-hmm.
All right. I'll call the roll. Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. Next is municipal order 2020, 2004. Municipal order approving the purchase of property at 1316 Old Roto by Golden Flower LLC through Richard B. Feldman and authorizing the mayor, other authority officials to execute the real estate sale and purchase agreement deed and all other necessary documents. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Paragon, Mr. Mizel.
So I'm happy to announce that we, we do have a contract on this property to add to our, uh, property or, or along the riverfront. And I'd like to thank Brent for staying on this and, and working through all the details over the last year. I know we discussed this with you all probably about a year ago or so, and, uh, it's finally come to fruition. And so, uh, asking you all, it's just 1316 Old Roto, uh, property from Mr. Mr. Feldman for 2,500 and add our, uh, free for the, for the further park development. Brent can answer any questions if I have. Copy of the, uh, purchase agreement is in your packets.
Any comments or questions?
Yes, young.
Joe?
As a former policeman, uh, been in this historic preservation house on many occasions.
Okay, Joe.
Uh, I am glad, uh, he was under his predecessors. Uh, but I am, uh, glad to see us continue to increase our park development at that site. Because, uh, many of you don't know, uh.
You don't have to tell everything you know, Joe.
Huh?
You don't have to tell everything you know.
No, 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 no. I was getting ready to tell about the time that I was with the agency that bought the bulldozer to start the park in the mid 70s. It was through the Model City Agency, which was funded by the Housing and Human Development. Uh, Richard Rector was there at that time and, uh, Jeff's uncle. And we utilized money and forwarded money to the city of Bowling Green to buy Mr. Lindsey, whose son Dale Lindsey played many years in an, in, in the NFL and coached many years in the NFL. His dad, a new DCA bulldozer to start that project. I know, Mary, you thought I was going to say something else.
I did. So let's, let's, we'll just end the discussion right there and I'll, I'll go ahead and call. Denning?
Uh, yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes.
Historic landmark going down.
I do have a question. I do have a question about how quickly I'd received complaints about the condition of the property. I think I directed those either to Brent or to Greg in Public Works and found out that it was still in limbo. How quickly will we be able to clean that up? The businesses on the other side of the street have reached out to me on more than one occasion about that.
Yeah. So my, my plan is as soon as we get done with closing and we own the property, then we'll begin the demolition process. Our first step would be environmental testing and then remediation. Uh, but we're going to move forward on this one as quickly as we can. It's taken me about three years to purchase it, but I'm ready to, uh, see a level graded dirt site there with some grass growing in the spring.
If you could make sure one brick is delivered to Joe Denning, I would appreciate it.
I'm sure he already has his name on one down there. So I'll just have to.
Hey Brent, Brent? If you would.
Is this not what you want? Slim, I appreciate that.
Ma, what you gonna do, fires?
Okay. Next is, we've already voted on that one. So next is the first reading of ordinance BG 2020, 45. Ordinance related to budget amendment. Ordinance approving amendment number two to the city of Bowling Green, Kentucky annual operating budget for fiscal year 2021, motion by Wilkerson, second by Paragon, Mr. Mizel.
Over to Katie Schaller Ward, our assistant city manager and chief financial officer, uh, to answer questions. We're basically picking up, uh, the grant funds that we've gotten, CARES money, all kinds of things. Katie?
Yeah, Jeff has pretty much outlined it. Um, we're bringing in some grant funds on some actions the board has already taken. Um, we're expanding some of the grant funds, um, for COVID related expenses. Uh, and then of course, um, some of the items we've already talked about tonight in terms of the CDBG additional coronavirus funds. Some additional donation programs that Parks has where we've received some funds. And, um, the housing choice voucher mainstream program that was approved at the last meeting, the additional vouchers. So it's just a variety of different items. Um, and then there is the very last page identifies as Meredith had mentioned earlier, um, the land sale of the Nova Steel, um, piece of property there, um, where we're going to be adding that to our, our debt payment, um, this year. So, um, that's just some brief overview of that information.
Any comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. There'll be a second reading at the next meeting. Next is first reading of ordinance BG 2020, 46. Ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing 79.05 acres from light industrial to heavy industrial and heavy industrial to heavy industrial located at zero and 192 Technology Way and 458, 500, 572 and 630. Glasgow Road presently owned by the Bowling Green Area Development Authority Incorporated and Intermodal Transportation Authority Incorporated care of Ron Bunch, Nova Steel, USA Incorporated care of KB Corporation Services Incorporated. Motion by Wilkerson and second by Paragon. Uh, this is a unanimous recommendation for rezoning. Is there any other comment or question? I'll call the roll. Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. We'll have seconds and follow up next reading. Next is the first reading of ordinance BG 2020, 47. Ordinance extending franchise relating to telecommunications system. Or not, ordinance authorizing the extension of non-exclusive telecommunications joint franchise agreement with Bluegrass Network LLC. And Warren County motion by Wilkerson, second by Paragon, Mr. Mizel.
I'm actually going to defer this to Hillary Hightower, city attorney. She's been working on this, uh, renewal with Bluegrass Network. Uh, Hillary, you want to take it?
Yes, thank you, Jeff. This is an extension of an agreement that was executed in 2010. The franchise actually dates back to 1997, but it expired. So it was recreated and rebid in 2010. Bluegrass Network LLC was the only bidder at the time. It was awarded to them for 10 years with an option to extend it for two, five-year terms. Um, they did contact me, I guess, I think they contacted the mayor and he notified me at the end of October. And, um, we've executed an extension agreement. It's the same, basically the same franchise as we awarded in 2010 with a couple of updates to language. Um, our ordinance concerning street cuts has changed, so we updated that. Uh, Doug Uptograph is here from Bluegrass Network LLC to answer any questions that you all may have. And I anticipate we'll, we will probably renew it again in five years.
I'm sorry, Doug, it's you.
Is this Bluegrass Network the same as Bluegrass Sluggier Group?
I, I, I believe that they are. Doug can answer that, but I think that they are affiliated. Um, I think that this is the internet portion. Doug, are you there? I can see him, but I don't know if he can hear us.
Yeah, I'm going to hear. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, we can hear you.
So, yes, this, uh, Bluegrass Network has been managed by Bluegrass Cellular, uh, since it was started back in. since it was started back in nineteen ninety-four. So since the Verizon purchase or agreement to purchase has been announced, we have spun Bluegrass Network off from Bluegrass Cellular, so it's its own entity at this point. So it does not have any relations with Bluegrass Cellular. And after the close, Bluegrass Cellular will not exist anymore.
Will not. Bluegrass what will not exist?
Bluegrass Cellular would not exist anymore.
Joe, they were purchased by Verizon, so Verizon will just, Bluegrass Cellular will become Verizon, but Bluegrass Network LLC will remain its own company.
Oh, okay. I wasn't aware that Bluegrass had been purchased by Verizon.
Uh, yeah, yeah, the sale is still pending, but it's scheduled to close it early in the year next year.
Okay. Must've missed that somewhere along the line. Why don't you tell me, Slim?
I'd like to keep secrets from you, Joe.
That's about a month ago, if I remember right, that that announcement came out.
Uh, yeah.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Uh-huh, you're welcome.
Any other comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Denning?
Yes, sir.
Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yeah.
Wilkerson is yes. That's the first reading, and the second binding reading will be at our next meeting. There are no public comments. Ashley, if I could, I'm having a little bit of trouble hearing. Especially Jeff's is in and out. Could, would you mute everybody except, I think Slim is gonna go first and some comments, and then after that we'll have Joe. So Slim, you're up if you've got comments for us.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is a position that I didn't wanna be in, but a position that I've been in before. So it's not new territory to me before. What I want to say is that I am humbled and honored by the number of people that have reached out to me since I was, I did not I was not successful in my reelection bid. They have been very kind and they have been very thankful. The thankfulness part is a little unusual for me. It's a little uncomfortable, to be honest with you. I really believe this job is about thanking the citizens for the opportunity to serve. And as equally important, it's about thanking the citizens for the input on an ongoing basis on how the city commission should operate. And I want to say to everybody, whether we regularly agreed or whether we rarely agreed at all, ninety-nine percent of the conversations that I've had with people about issues have been productive and have been helpful to me. There's one percent out there that haven't been, but I have really done a lot of self-talk so that I don't talk about the negativity because there's too much positivity going on in Bowling Green to allow that one percent to drag down what has been done and hopefully what will be done in the future. Every day I have learned from the citizens of Bowling Green something. Whether it's about the impacts of traffic on their road, whether it's about how the water flows through their backyard. You know, I was hoping Greg would be on, would be at this meeting today because I feel like Greg is, is was the go-to guy all year where we went out and we looked at where water flowed. And so I think a lot of times people don't focus on how important a local government is to the lives that they're living. And it's easy to get focused on what's happening in Washington or what's happening in Frankfurt. And a lot of times the decisions that directly impact people's lives are being made right here in the city of Bowling Green on the city commission. And that is learning from people how the water flows through their backyard, how the traffic flows on the roads that are in front of their house. And I'm thankful to those people who were willing to reach out to me and educate me. And I'm also thankful for those people that I reached out to and who were willing to talk to me. I realize that when I call people up, you know, the easy thing is to say is I'm from the government and I'm here to help. And nobody generally believes that is true, although that is what I believe collectively what we're saying. I've also learned that change only happens from people. It doesn't happen from us. We might be the yay or nay at the end of the discussion, but the change only really comes when people will get together and work together for a common good. And I hope what people will do in my absence is that they will continue to stay on top of the issues and not wait until it's in front of the city commission to respond. Because that is the last step of a multi-step process. And if the citizens of Bowling Green really want a representative government, then they're gonna have to participate in that on an ongoing basis and earlier than what they likely think they need to. I don't really know where to go in this, in what I'm saying right here from here, other than to say it has been a real pleasure to serve the citizens of Bowling Green. I take a lot of criticism about, you know, liking talking to the media, liking being in front of the camera, liking sharing my opinions. And I hear those criticisms. I don't believe them. You know, the local media will tell you, that I often tell them, call everybody else. And only if you can't get a hold of them, give me a call. One of the most controversial issues that I was ever involved in was an issue that Bruce Wilkerson drove about the realignment of a road. WBKO wanted an interview, said they couldn't get a hold of anybody, called me, and I became the face of this road realignment for the citizen who I swear today would not throw a cup of water on me if I was on fire. And I was just one could, like, I wasn't even involved in the project other than to ratify the final decision. So it was never about media. It was never about being popular. Good God, it was never about being popular. There are lots of decisions that I could go back and change that would have made me a lot more popular. But the guarantee that I made to myself is that I would lay down at night, put my head on my pillow, and I'd do so with a clean conscience. I suffer from insomnia of the weight of some decisions, but I never laid my head down thinking, have I sold out in order to do something else? And I don't believe I have. I thank the citizens of Bowling Green. I thank the city staff. Good grief, have you put up with a lot for me over twelve years, whether they're phone calls after work or whether they're why not? As I look at Brent or I look at Katie, and I've said those things to them, they give me these really long eloquent explanations. And at the end of that, I say, but why not? And I appreciate the patience. I appreciate the guidance. I appreciate the care and the concern that I believe everybody in this meeting and those that aren't in this meeting have for the city of Bowling Green and that they and that they want to see the community be a better place, even if we have different routes to get there. And man, do we have some different routes to get there. I hate to see this end. That's the way it works. The only thing I would say is that I have served twelve non-consecutive years, and the key word for that is non-consecutive. Thank you for the time, Mayor.
Thank you, Slim. Ashley, would you unmute Joe, please? Joe, you're up now.
Well, thank you, Mayor. You know, I, last few days between looking at gun smoke and fests and some of the others, I've tried to jot down a few things. First, let me tell all the, let the audience know that Joe Denning has been blessed. Little black boy growing up over at five oh nine Kentucky Street. Few doors from the L and N train station. Going to a segregated high school, living in a segregated community. Not being able to go to any restaurants in Bowling Green other than going down and going in the back door, getting my sack to go. City policeman at that time calling us the N-word. And down on Kentucky Street, it wasn't one of the nicest streets I live on, try to go by. Because when the police came down on Kentucky Street, you could be assured of a few things having happened. Someone's got shot, someone's gotten stabbed, or someone had been cut, or someone was dead. That was the way it was in the fifties and sixties when this old guy lived there. I saw everything. I said then, if I live to get a little older, I wanted to do something else in my life. And the things I'm going to say, I do not want anybody to interpret it as bragging in any way. It's not. I'll take you upfront. But I have been blessed in the fact that in nineteen sixty-eight, I became the first black city policeman here in the city of Bowling Green. In nineteen seventy, I became the second black Kentucky state trooper. In years that followed in the seventies or so, I became the first elected black individual to an elective office in the city of Bowling Green and the county of Warren when I was elected to the Bowling Green School Board after having served by being appointed and running in that November election. The people of Bowling Green were kind enough to let me stay there for eighteen years. During that time, my girls were in school and I'm on the school board and I couldn't get my own kids in McNeil's school. And I'm on the school board. And the credit goes to McNeil and the principal. Good school, good people. As I said, people were kind enough to me along that way. Around twenty-eight years or so ago, I ran for a city commission. First of my race ever to be elected a city commissioner. And I served with some good people over the twenty-eight years that I've been here. I started off with the Honorable Johnny Webb and the Honorable John Odom, late John Odom, who became my close friend and told me a lot that I, as a youngster, wouldn't have known about the city of Bowling Green and its operation during those years, early years. You'd be surprised. I know the names. And I will not say those. I do know that he told me, and it's no secret, that the night the word got out that he was gonna start five black basketball players on the dealerina floor, the world was gonna come to an end. We were gonna have flash floods, everybody was gonna be killed. And his board of regents at that time told him, John, you cannot start five black basketball players tonight. You know what my buddy told him? Come to the game tonight. And he did. Those are the kind of people that I've had to force and pleasure of being around in my lifetime. I'm not talking about yours or anybody else. I'm talking about mine. And it has been my great honor to be here for the years that I have. The people of the city of Bowling Green have been good to me in every way. And this defeat this past November, November third, I believe, is not going to cause me to do anything seriously to myself. I can assure you. I was defeated. I believe I was targeted as the individual to defeat. And it worked. I must say, something in this election bothered me and of all the other problems that I've had to work with being an elective official, this particular issue bothered me. Two other issues in my lifetime has bothered me being in elective office. My life has been threatened on two occasions, one as a school board member in my early years and one as a Bowling Green city commissioner, which I turned over to the chief at that time and the FBI. But I can't forget the good folks out there that has been with me all my life. In this election on November the third, we had some and I think one of the person, unless they prove differently, state legislator Patty Mentor has been involved and along with some of her cronies to target me as the one to beat. And it worked. It worked. It worked. Whether I agreed with it or not, the end result was, it worked. And that's fine. But I want to say to my colleagues and the people out in the community that we need to be careful and not have the city government of Bowling Green become a partisan participation rather than a non-partisan participation. The city government of Bowling Green that we have now is here because of the political squabbles back in the sixties that led up to this form of government. Why do we wanna go back to that? The city commission races should not be scared me, ran under the flags of a party label. It should continue to be, in my opinion, hencefore and forevermore opposite of that. In other words, you want everybody to vote for you, the Tupperware Party, Tea Party, or whatever party to vote for you. It not be a party label race. Now, Joe Denning only can play his part. The citizens of Bowling Green got, and I think the citizens of Bowling Green saw that in this election. I think we, the people of this community, are going about after this race, making sure that this doesn't happen again. Now, some of those out there listening may say that old Joe Denning doesn't know what he's talking about. But I can guarantee you, this is one time I know what I'm talking about. We must not under any circumstances yield to those who won't. to do something different than what we have. As Slim said earlier, we have succeeded by having good people all around us in the city of Bowling Green. We have had good people in elective office in Bowling Green. We have a county government that we work with on a daily basis that has gone about being a part, a major part of making Bowling Green, Kentucky, the best place anywhere to live and certainly in the state of Kentucky. Let's don't mess it up. Let's do not make Bowling Green a political statement for those that want to change this form of government. Let's do not get to the point where we argue and squabble over everything that comes our way. Let's do not have people anywhere in our environment here that prevents us from continuing to bring good jobs to our town and to our county. I guarantee you, the government, the city government that squabbles back and forth will not be a city government that succeeds in looking out for their people. We see this in Washington today. Yeah, a guy walks down the aisle up there and he doesn't speak to him because he's a, from the other party. They put that show on and go out to eat together at the same night. I have a cocktail party over each other's house. Well, you know, cocktail parties may not be bad, but, uh, let's be decent when we get on the floor. I don't like that. I never have played politics. I've never, except for my early years, attended functions where there was a party label attached. Because I want people to know that when they have that Tea Party and Tupperware Party, I'm coming to buy some plastic or drink some tea. Uh, I, uh, I don't know what more I can say other than my telephone ringing. Uh, I've been blessed, as I said, to be a city commissioner. But I am blessed also that I live in a community to where I have seen the changes. You know, this little old black boy used to be able to go to the Princess Theater over by Golden Farnin Men's Store and to the State Theater right here below me at City Hall where I'm seated now. But I couldn't go to the Capitol Theater because I was black. I am black. Couldn't go. But old Joe Danning over the years, not that anything new should pay for the price of the old, but I voted to view the Capitol Arts Center money all the years I've been here. One could say, well, you shouldn't do that. You should hold a grudge. No, why hold a grudge? That particular building and the makeup of it now had nothing to do with me having to go in there and set, set upstairs because I couldn't sit with the whites downstairs. We gave one lady the same money on both sides. One went in one door and we went up the hill. God has been good to me, to the staff and all of the employees I've had the pleasure of working with here. Uh, I love you all. Uh, I've always tried to, over the years, be as close to the employees as I could. I have many friends in city government here and will continue to have as long as I live. Uh, I've worked for four city managers. Johnny Webb, Eldon, uh, Sandy and Elaine. Uh, good folks did what they believed what was right in the city of Bowling Green. Uh, did I say Bruce Wilkinson? Did I miss him? And Bruce Wilkinson. And for those of you who don't know, uh, I ran against Bruce Wilkinson for mayor of city of Bowling Green. And he beat me and I haven't let him forget it. But, uh, all of us have made Bowling Green what it is today. And as I go off into the sunset, I want all of you to know that I'm gonna learn to play the guitar and, uh, don't bother me unless you have to. You hear that, Slim? But, uh, it's been an honor and pleasure uh, to have served for the years that I've served. It was only because many people out there believed in me and stayed with me to today. And, uh, I closed with, uh, no sadness. I'm not gonna cry and let you see it. But I, I'm gonna be fine. I will continue to be the same Joe Danning I have been for a few years. There has never been anyone that I wanted to be like. Now, I will say that there are some out there that I'd love to have their money. But that's all. Not like, just money. But, uh, I'm only joking and, uh, thank you for giving me, uh, this opportunity.
So, I crashed your party in here because I want you to know how much the community is grateful for all that you've done for as many years as you have. And all we have to offer you is this key to the city of Bowling Green, but
Thank you, Mayor.
You've got our love and always will have.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And, uh, I, uh, I'm still going to support city government. Even though I have to turn my key in and my fog and my computer, all of you will know the new Jane, I mean, Joe Danning, uh, email. I can assure you. And, uh, Mayor, I appreciate it. We've been here a long time together and, uh, uh, if you invite me down to fish, I'll come, but it's gonna be from the damn bank. It will not be out on the walk. Thank you.
That's one key you won't have to turn in, so.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you to this community for all that you are and do.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Thank you to this community and our, our meetings now adjourned.